Good evening. Tonight's meeting is a continuation of the item we had at our previous meeting, January 20th, I believe, relating to the municipal code amendment TA 14-01, revising the city of Ojai's telecommunication regulations, section 10-2.712 and the associated California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, determination as exempt pursuant to SEQA guidelines 15061B3 as a project that has no potential to cause a significant effect on the environment. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with by hearing from staff at this time?
[inaudible]
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was ready to move on. Yeah. Chester, would you please just? Thank you.
[inaudible]
Now, we're ready to hear from staff.
Okay. Thank you. Chairman and members of the commission, I'll just make a few comments and then I'll turn it over to our legal team. As you know, since the federal government has published new regulations, we've been in the process of revising our ordinance to make it compatible with those regulations. And we're on a track to try and get that done by the time the new regulations go into effect, which for most purposes is April 9th. At the last meeting, clearly there was a need for more time for the public to provide input into the process, and so the commission wisely chose to adjourn the meeting to this time. Following that meeting on the Thursday after the Wednesday meeting, the legal team put together the most current draft, and that was put on our posted on our website in Word format and also sent around to various parties who'd showed interest in order to give them an opportunity to redline in potential changes to the ordinance so that we could get down to the very specific things that they thought we should consider or you should consider. That comment period closed at the end of the day on Friday, and we then sent the documents, actually, we sent them as they were coming in, but we sent all the documents to the legal team, and they spent the weekend going through those, and they produced what you have in front of you tonight, which is a red line showing all the comments combined from the four different people who commented, along with notes on their part as to whether the change should be accepted, modified, or rejected, and the reasoning behind that. So that's kind of the process we've been through, and I think it's been a very good process, a very helpful format. There are just a couple of things I wanted to mention that aren't in the ordinance. First of all, there was a lot of discussion about height, and as you know, the legal team has recommended that height be the standard height that applies in each zone, but people had pointed out that certain zones don't have height limits. So I wanted to let you know that we have initiated a process to review the height limits in all the zones. What that requires is a negative deck process, which takes a little bit of time to prepare and then a little bit of noticing time. And so, going on a fast track, the height ordinance is tentatively scheduled to come to the planning commission at the March 18th meeting, along with the environmental documentation. If that schedule holds, the council could hold a hearing at its April 14th meeting because there's a notice period required after planning commission acts, and then they could have a second reading on April 28th, which would put standard height limits for all zones in place by May 28th. Now, that is after the April 9th effective date of these new regulations, but the legal team has indicated that applications that come in during that period of time from April 9th through May 28th, as long as they're not acted on and a building permit issued, could be made subject to whatever the standard, the new standard height limits are.
You're talking about building permits of any type, not just one particular category?
That's correct. So the same rules would apply to any other type of construction that were to occur during that time period. Thank you. There had also been comments about noise and lighting, and it would be helpful to us if there's testimony this evening about what changes people might want to see to noise and lighting ordinances. We could follow a similar process with those. With respect to lighting in particular, we did adopt recently a fairly restrictive dark sky ordinance, and so I, my impression is, is that there shouldn't be any problems with lighting. Noise, we have standards that are very similar to other communities, and they apply to all zones. So, again, any comments would be helpful to help us understand that issue. Within the ordinance, in section 10-14-050B1, there's a section that I think you need to look at closely, which is the section that helps decide where the best sites are for cell towers within the city. So there's a sequence of priorities in there, and those really have, they were put out by the legal team and by staff, but have not been really closely looked at, and I think they should be closely looked at. So I'd call that out. And then one other issue that has come up is that in a couple portions of the ordinance, there's a provision for where the director of community development can either waive application requirements or waive a scheduled meeting requirement. And concern was expressed about having some methodology for checking that to make sure that such waivers were appropriate. I would say from the staff perspective, if you were to delete those sections and not require waivers, we'd be fine with that. So with those few things, I would like to turn it over to the legal team and give them an opportunity to go through some of the changes and respond to your questions.
And Mr. Chair, before we begin, and really, I'm going to let Matt take the lead on this because he was the one who put all the comments together and we assisted. On behalf of the city manager and all of us that have been working over the weekend, we appreciate the comments that came in from the public. They were very helpful and gave us a lot of good guidance, and we, they were definitely very beneficial to us.
Thank you. Indeed. It's always useful to have more sets of eyes on such a complex document, particularly ones that are going sentence by sentence. I'm not going to go through every single comment we've made as there's, but I'm happy to answer questions on any particular one. I just wanted to highlight a couple of the more important ones or more controversial items. First up, to echo the comments on the waiver issue, there's, for each of the different waiver provisions, governing application requirements for CUPs and for designer view permits, and the waiver provision for the application, the pre-application submitted appointment requirement. The council has, the commission has three options, and ultimately, the council, again, will have the three options. The first is to delete the waiver provision entirely and require that the same materials be submitted with every application. That's fine. The second option is to allow the city manager to approve a waiver recommended by the director. The third option is to allow the director to make a waiver subject to a five-day council veto period, where if two or one or two members of the council, you can just have discretion to choose how many, send in a notice indicating their objection, then the director's waiver does not stand. All three options are legal, and thus, it's a policy choice as to which one to go with. I recommend that you either choose the delete the waiver option entirely and require the same application requirements for every application, or else allow the city manager to approve the director's waiver rather than routing it through the council. And my recommendation is based on a couple of concerns. One is the timing concern, these particularly for the designer view permits, there's a short 60-day clock that starts running when an application is submitted, not the usual clocks that count from when an application is deemed complete. So the initial period of deciding what is required for the application once it's received, whether we're going to allow them to not submit a particular item, say, a noise study where we aren't concerned about noise, or not. The time to make that decision, and thus, the time that would include a council waiver, is part of that 60 days, and that could be a substantial amount of time when we only have that short period of time that, as you recall, includes both planning review and the building, review for a building permit. And the other recommendation is that it cuts off entirely a potential bias concern in that the council will have the ability to act on any of these permits if they're appealed up to the council. And it's best to ensure that the decision makers on appeal haven't already been involved in the administrative process on a particular application, keeping the lines clear and keeping the record very clear, that there's no potential bias. That said, if the council waiver provision was included, I think it's a defensible ordinance. We would defend it against any facial challenge on the ground that such a theoretical bias claim can only be proved in an as-applied case. And in any particular case, if one was brought up and a council member objected to an item and the, objected to a proposed waiver and the applicant later sued, we would argue that that likely wouldn't meet the very high standard for a bias claim, which is that there's an unacceptable probability of actual bias. That, in other words, the option is legal, but we recommend to cut all of that off, choose between delete the waiver or have the city manager do it. But all three are legal, and that's within your possible options. That's the waiver point. Other ones that I wanted to highlight are, oh, thank you. What I'm going through, when I will say a page number and a section number, is the version that's the redlined version, which I recommend we all use as our commented version because it has the most information available. The other version that was made available to you and to the public is the ver, the blacklined version, and the blacklined version has all of the changes proposed by the public accepted or rejected as we recommend. And so when we're discussing it tonight, I recommend that we stick to the page numbers in the redlined version that will allow us to all be on the same page. With regard to, I'm on page seven, in the middle of the page, section D, public notice. On this one, the section 6409, and it's amended, as amending the Telecom Act, doesn't allow us to trigger completeness of an application on the receipt of public notice. So I recommend that we, while providing for public notice, we nonetheless delete this proposed last sentence that would require that an application isn't deemed complete until public notice is given. That way, once the application is submitted, we can review it for completeness and either send an incomplete notice or else deem it complete. Either way, once the application is received, at the same time, we start the public notice process, which will be developed. And in addition, all applications will be posted on the website. That way, any member of the public who is concerned about wireless issues and commissioners and council members can keep an eye on the website, and they'll see, oh, an application came in. And that way, everybody will be aware. And that is particularly relevant because a 6409A application won't come before the commission unless the decision is appealed, and that gives the public the opportunity to track those applications and be aware of them as they come in. On page eight, section, as, let's see, renumbered six, statement of purpose. The last sentence is proposed by Verizon, and I recommend rejection of that. The sentence that reads propagation maps shall not be required for sites designed to improve capacity as set forth in the technical objective. What they're trying to get at is they're trying to argue that a wireless site that is designed to increase capacity should be given the same protections under the Telecom Act as a wireless site designed to close a significant gap in service. That's an incorrect reading, in my opinion, of the Telecom Act. So I recommend we reject that change to ensure that we are accepting the limits on our authority, but not going beyond our limits. That way, the city has as much discretion as possible is reserved to itself in the ordinance. And there's a couple of other points where the same capacity point is brought up, and I recommend we reject capacity. The focus has to be on whether or not an application, for non-6409 ones, of course, whether or not the application is the least intrusive means to close a significant gap. Capacity increases are not given federal protection. They can certainly apply, but it's not the same protection. On page nine, at the top, section eight, alternative sites analysis. I recommend keeping it at five, not two. Verizon asked for two. I think two is too few. Five makes more sense. Again, this is entirely in your discretion, but I recommend five. And in any particular application where they can truly show that there's just only four logical sites, fine, then the applicant could submit a statement to that effect, and if it met the requirements under federal law for an exemption, then we would look at the four. But dropping it down to two is too few. It doesn't give the community enough sense of whether this site is truly the least intrusive means to close the gap at issue. I also recommend not adding the language, including any potential sites outside the city, because the city's authority and thus, the sites that it should consider as potential alternatives are only within the city. Although, as a practical point, an applicant and the carriers are smart. They're aware that going to the city is a much more challenging review process than going to the county. So when they're sitting down to decide, oh, we have this gap in coverage and we need to fill it, they're already looking at both sites inside and outside the county, inside and outside the city. And so, we'll get the benefit of that without having it in the ordinance and thus, a bit beyond our power. Let's see. On the next page, page 10, B1B, which Mr. Clark mentioned, this is the hierarchy of preferred zones, and this is entirely up to the commission's discretion. Councilmember Wyrick's comments, number 51, suggest a different hierarchy than the one listed here, which is available for your consideration. Councilmember Wyrick's suggested hierarchy is ag zones, industrial zones, city-owned parcels, golf course, commercial zones, open space, and last residential, reordering a few of them. In considering the hierarchy of preferred locations, keep in mind that it's a hierarchy of preferred locations, not a ban on any particular location. On the next subsection, subsection C, exception for facilities proposed based on proximity to residential uses, we recommend slightly modifying the language to be a little bit clearer, and then the distance requirement is up to the commission's consideration. Mr. Lobel suggests 500 feet. Staff recommends 300 feet. That's entirely up to your discretion. Keeping in mind that, again, it's not a prohibition on a facility within X feet of residential zone. It's a statement that that facility is less preferred than another facility. And keep in mind that, yeah, keep in mind that it's not a prohibition. On the next one, this is page 11 at the top, and these are subsections that are strongly We suggest adding materially and adversely impacted scenic water, view shed to ensure that the city is reasonable in the exercise of its discretion. If there was a facility that had a negligible impact on a view shed, that would be a harder case to defend than if there was a material adverse impact to a view shed. That's a stronger case to defend if the city justified that as its basis. As a plethora of case laws clear, the city, under both federal law and state law, particularly Public Utilities Codes, section 7901 and 7901.1, city has a fairly broad power to impose reasonable regulations geared towards protecting aesthetics. And so, to, in recognition of that reasonableness requirement, we've added materially and adversely. On the next one, the same point where delete impact, and we recommend replacing it with require the removal or relocation of a protected tree. Again, the focus is to keep it so the city's discretion is exercised reasonably, insulating the ordinance from a facial challenge, and yet, still ensuring that the city can reject a, or has the ordinance in place to reject a facility that does indeed require the removal of a protected tree. With the caveat, of course, if it's 6409, it's a different story. The same as the next section, be on the same parcel of landmark, as a landmark property. Again, the goal is to, impact a landmark property is a fairly vague sentence. That could be, one might argue that something 1,000 feet away or even a half a mile away impacts it. If we have it clear as be on the same parcel, then we've made a clear, concrete standard that is reasonable and that would be objectively applied. On the next, section two, stealth and concealment techniques, we've modified the proposed language from Mr. Lobel, but have accepted it, recommend exception. Stealth and concealment techniques do not include incorporating fake, faux tree designs of a kind substantially different than the surrounding live trees. This will ensure that you don't get a mono pine in a stand of palm trees or a mono palm in a stand of oak trees, that they're sensible about which kind of fake trees. With the further recognition that in a particular site, the fake tree approach may not be the right approach. Often, it's not the right approach, but sometimes it can be done well. It varies. And that'll be part of what the city can look at on these applications is the aesthetic concerns. And that's where the city has the strongest power, is aesthetic focus, including structuring fake tree requirements or suggesting to the applicant that they find another way to do it that isn't a fake tree, perhaps hidden behind a parapet wall. Or, as I've seen in some of the cities I work with, built into a little protrusion on the front of a building covered by RF transparent panels that, it just looks like a box on the building, but it's, the cell site's behind it, and it can go through the panels. Let's see, the next one. On page 14, at the top, section 10, added by Mr. Lobel, we recommend not adding the wildlife, water, and ecology point here because a much broader environmental analysis is built into SEQA, which takes into account wildlife, water, and ecology, along with view shed, noise, traffic, parking, if a site would affect parking, the whole plethora of environmental issues. It's a much broader review, and I, if we include it here, we suggest that we've limited our review to just these focus, just these environmental concerns and not all environmental On the bottom of this page, 14, and going on into the next 15, we've added language that should a court rule section 6409 invalid in some future date, then an application would automatically have to apply for a conditional use permit, not, they wouldn't be able to get these special designer view permits out of that slightly lower finding standard. We're hoping that that will happen, but that remains to be seen. On page 17, subsection D, and the same was made to section, subsection E on page 17 and F on the next page, is we deleted the may not deny language and rephrase that to be, the director must approve a designer view permit application. Same point, but it's a cleaner phrasing, which I think will help things be a little bit clearer. The same, oh, and then further, in finding seven, the previous language was a little too favorable to the applicants, allowing them to indicate, based on the representations, that it appears to violate a condition of approval. We've deleted the appears and representations point, and we've added the point recognizing that in some cases, a previous, a project may violate a previous condition of approval, but that's nonetheless exempted under section 6409. The classic example would be, a facility was originally proved to be 15 feet tall. They come in for an extension under 6409 that allows them an extra 10% in height. They would get that extra foot and a half. Even though it violates the previous condition of approval, it's preempted by federal law. So that's why we've added that language. And you'll see the same language on the next page, 18, for the other two types, finding sets for designer view permits. Of course, that only extends to conditions of approval preempted by section 6409, which would be your size constraints, not anything else, which includes, of course, screening. They have to maintain the same screening as they previously had. On page 20, at the top, number, subsection seven, and this is under the conditions of approval specific to 6409 facilities. Councilmember Wyrick suggested adding insurance and asked where are the insurance requirements. And here, I recommend not putting insurance requirements in the ordinance because the city cannot require insurance requirements for facilities that are not on its property. However, should a facility, should the city lease space to a wireless facility, in the lease agreement, we would impose vigorous insurance requirements, ensuring that should anything go wrong, the city will have a source of funds to call upon. On the next page, oh, did I miss one? Oh, yes. On also page 20, about the middle, section two, procedures for designer view permit denial without prejudice, we've added that should a designer view permit be denied without prejudice, the applicant can submit the same permit or substantially the same application in the future. And the classic example of this will be that if an applicant comes in and contends that their modification is protected by section 6409, and we look at it and we say, no, you're not. Perhaps they're outside the height limit, the outside the height limit exception, or perhaps they did some work to it that wasn't legal and thus, it's not legally existing. Whatever the issue is, we will deny without prejudice the designer view permit application. Then they can resubmit it as a conditional use permit with the full penumbly of the city's power. And that's designed to not kick it for a year later, which would otherwise, we generally wouldn't require applications to be submitted for a year of the same project. Go ahead.
Of course, if an application comes in, and it's not 6409 because we find some noncompliance with the prior condition, it wouldn't prevent the city from doing code enforcement. Just saying.
On the next page, page 21, section 10-1470A, selection by director, we recommend adding the language proposed by Councilmember Wyrick, requiring the city manager, city manager to approve the independent consultant. And then down in the subsection B, Mr. Lobel proposed a few additions to the consultant's consideration, and the impact on surrounding properties business is built into every application. That is always considered. It doesn't need to be called out, but we do recommend adding presence or absence of a significant gap in coverage as appropriate to ensure that on the applications where we can consider that, which would be your conditional use permit applications, the independent consultant's review will do just that. Oh, and we've also added one or more in subsection A, should one consultant be required to evaluate the noise study and another required to evaluate the Telecom Act elements of the permit, for example, the significant gap and the coverage at issue. On the next page, 22, section B, towards the top, the requirements that a facility be landscaped, fenced, and maintained as appropriate in compliance with the permit, with the approved plans, this is enforceable by the city via its current code enforcement processes and as a violation of the municipal code. In the right case, the city could secure an abatement warrant under its existing procedures under section 10-1460G5 and secure an abatement warrant to do the maintenance and then lien the property to pay for the maintenance. The same thing that might be done if a property owner doesn't do the fire clearance required to maintain a defensible space. That can also be done by the city and then put a lien on the property taxes. So we'll be able to get, recover our costs one way or another. On the bottom of that page, abandoned facilities, we've added language expanding the universe of people we can go after to cover costs of recovering an abandoned facility to be the permutee, the facility owner, or the landowner. And we thought further about the bond issue and recommend that we, as prompted by Councilmember Wyrick, do include a bond requirement, but that it not be specified as a $2,000 amount. The amount be set up, be The amount be set up, be determined by the director, and the form of the bond be approved by the city attorney, allowing a case-by-case determination of the amount of the bond required for removal for a particular facility, which will vary depending on the facility type. And that'll ensure that we'll have a source of funds to call should abandonment become an issue, and the applicant, the facility owner not take the required steps. And on page 24, section 10, 14120, Verizon proposed several edits to reduce the standard by which the city is forced to grant an exception to one of the standards in order to comply with federal law, and I recommend rejecting all of Verizon's edits, and ensuring that we keep the clear and convincing standard, because federal law doesn't require a lower standard, so we should keep the highest standard we can. And the same, I recommend we reject his language, including that added capacity, again, on the same point I made earlier, that capacity increases aren't a protected category of wireless site. They're welcome to apply, but it's not protected. So I recommend rejecting that language. And the last addition, I recommend rejecting that as well, although I didn't get, it didn't get strike through, but the comment has a little rejection recommendation. We shouldn't limit our ability to require the applicant to make the showing. It should be for every application to which it applies. And that is the end of, oh, the last comment is from Councilmember Wierich, asking where we have the language that allows us to get rid of these special section 6409 permits, should a court invalidate section 6409, and that language we have included, as I mentioned earlier. And that, that's the changes we made that I think warrant special note. I'm happy to answer questions on any of those, or any other change that we've proposed in here.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Are there any questions for legal counsel from?
On section 10, 14040.
The page?
Page six of 26. Paragraph.
I'm sorry, six of 25.
Six of 26, well, we, six of.
Where says 26?
It's six of.
The heck, you're taking it back.
Six.
Oh, I see.
It says both on the page.
It says both, yeah.
Under permits A1, that language is, I find that language confusing, particularly at the part where it starts 10, 14060, subdivisions D through F. It's talking about new facilities and then co-locations. And then it says shall be subject to the approval of conditional use permit in compliance with Article blah blah, and subject to the approval of a design review permit in compliance with Article 20. All, it seems contradictory.
What we're trying to capture here is, the facility that isn't, that cannot meet the requirements to get a designer view permit approved under this section, still has to get a designer view permit under the general Article 20, chapter 2, and, which allows the staff to have the ability to do a detailed review of the facility's design.
Okay. Okay, so we're talking about two different processes, right?
Yeah.
The new facilities versus the co-locations or modifications. The co-locations and the modifications that don't fit under those, the 6409, they automatically go to the CUP process, correct?
Yes.
So they shall then be subject to the approval of conditional use permit in compliance with Article 24, and subject to the approval of a design review permit in compliance with Article 20. So I don't get when, you know, where do those two, I just think that, it's confusing.
Okay.
Saying, it's, to me, it's saying that, is it just, is it just really the, is that, aren't those two, isn't Article 24 and Article 20 two different processes talking about two different processes?
Yes. They'll have to secure a CUP and a standard designer view permit. The trick here is that there's two types of designer view permits at issue.
Oh.
There's the designer view permits under Article 20, chapter 2.
Uh huh.
And then there's designer view permits under section 10, 1460 subdivision D through F, which is the wireless designer view permit, specific to section 6409 facilities.
If I may, what does Article 20 refer to? Can you get specific about Article 20 and chapter 2?
Design review permit. Is the, I don't have it in front of me.
It's design review permit.
Design, is it design guidelines?
It's the standard design guidelines.
Okay.
The standard zoning code design guidelines.
Okay.
For all, any facility, not just wireless. Any project, not even a facility.
Correct.
Any building.
So you're just referencing the general design guidelines for the city, okay?
Yeah.
So it's subject to both? You're saying it's subject to the Article 24, which is the CUP, and Article 20, which is design review?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalie. Any further questions for legal counsel? Mr. Lojowski?
Yeah, I have one question. And forgive my ignorance of this, but, you know, I'm going to ask it anyway. Some of the things I really liked in the edits were, you know, talking about, you know, on page like, for example, 14 to 26, you know, number 10 with the wildlife, water, and ecology, and elsewhere in here, it said, you know, we wouldn't want projects placed near springs or watersheds. And it seemed that legal counsel's response to that was that, well, these areas or these features wouldn't be affected anyway because of CEQA. But I'm wondering, could you just talk me through that? Like, if, if, if an application came to you, they would have to, would all applications be subject to CEQA, or would we have exemptions? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it may well be the case that some of the applications would be subject to exemptions under CEQA, particularly the 6409 applications, because, under the ministerial exception to CEQA, where a facility that, CEQA only applies to discretionary projects, and if federal law requires approval of an application because it meets the findings, then we have to approve it, therefore, CEQA does not apply.
So it would just kind of be like, if that's the case, then it wouldn't even matter if we had this written into the law anyway, right?
It would matter for the, the new sites that are not section 6409. For a new facility, we would do a full CEQA review. It wouldn't be ministerially exempt, because we have a discretionary review to deny it. And in that case, we would do a full analysis of the project, and whether an exemption would apply would depend on the particular facts of that project. But for any given exemption, there is the exception to the exemptions if there are potentially significant impacts on a resource. And I forget how exactly that section is phrased. But if you had a subject, potentially significant impacts as a result of unique characteristics. So if you had a facility that was proposed immediately adjacent to a blue line stream, for example, that might be a unique characteristic that would pull it out of the exemption for small infill development, say, and thus allow us to consider that further.
Okay, and so would the CEQA also fall under archaeological sites? Would that cover that as well?
Yes. That would, could be another unique consideration.
Which could, which could stop a project.
Depending on the particular facts of a project, it could, or at least move it, required to be kicked to another portion of the parcel, would depend on the particulars of that, of a project with an archaeological issue.
Kind of to boil it down, where we pulled language out like that, it's because they would have, these words here would have been self-limiting, and because there was a whole other body of law out there, we didn't, it's what Matt said earlier, we just didn't want to create an appearance that this is all we're concerned about. So actually, by pulling that language, not, not, not accepting it, we understand the concern the author had in wanting to include it. It's actually better not to include it for the reasons that we've explained.
Thank you. Further questions? Commissioner Sevillia?
Sabella. Page eight of 26. On number five, visual analysis, why did you add the last statement, so our statement that no such completed facility exists?
Oh.
I added that, because there's always the possibility. So to be exhaustive, we wanted to, to have that as an option. There is, we hope that an applicant will come up with unique facilities that are appropriate for Ojai, and may not exist. I'll give you a perfect example. In Carr, Colorado, a mile south of the Wyoming border on Interstate 25, there's a 12-foot tall bison up on the side of the hill. And as it happens, it's got wireless panels on the body of it. Now, the, it's unique, it's the only one out there, and it was appropriate there because no trees, nothing, so they did public art. But by not having that exception here, we would be limiting. So they have to make an affirmative statement that it doesn't exist? And by the way, did you notice that it doesn't, it's not carrier-specific? We're making them reach beyond their own company and tell us if it exists as a, as a project type, not does XYZ have it.
But what's to prevent them from just saying, eh, it doesn't exist?
Well, the practical reality is, if they have said that, that that's, that's an affirmation made as part of an application for a government permit, and bad things happen when people lie to government officials. Do I need to go further?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I had a further point to note on the archaeological concerns. I know that this community has a particular focus on Native American archaeological sites, and under the relatively recent revisions to CEQA, there's further requirements for the tribe to be consulted, if there is identifiable tribe that matches that site. And those requirements would also kick in for a new facility. We would go through the consultation process with the, the particular tribe at issue.
So the way I understand, the same rules, ordinances apply to any public, public or private project, also work towards this ordinance?
Yep.
Work along this ordinance? Okay, generally applicable. Okay. All right. Further questions for legal counsel? I think we're going to move on into our public hearing portion. I want to make it clear before we do that speakers should state their name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes this evening. Comments must be directed to, to the commission, in particular, myself, not the audience or staff. And it goes without saying that we expect to maintain order and decorum. And I'd also advise that we try to be specific as we can when you're delineating your points in terms of section, subsection, page, so we can all be reading the same thing. Before me, I have a couple of green cards, speaker cards. Michael Francis Smith.
I'll keep my comments very brief tonight. I just wanted to thank you, Rosalie Sabilla, for standing up in the last meeting and suggesting that we postpone and have enough time to look at the changes that have been made, and want to thank the staff, and Mr. Summers, and Mr. Kramer. Now that we've seen the quality of your work, we're very pleased. I would like to encourage the commission to continue to be concerned about public notice. That is something that we continue to be very concerned about, but wanted to say thank you to each one of you for agreeing to do this and taking the time to understand what's going on. Thank you.
Jeff Lobel.
Thank you for taking the extra time to improve the ordinance and really resolve a lot of the issues that otherwise would have been left to the council. I realize that there was a lot of work, and they had to work over the weekend, and you're all back here again, so I appreciate it. To be more specific, I guess I would like to start off with, if I can, at page 10. Of course, trying to figure out what my notes were at this point is, the 500-foot issue. I don't necessarily have, I like to set in context. We were faced with the tower at the 1290 Grand property, which, if you take 300 feet, it's, it was from the edge of the property, and it really impacted a tremendous amount of the neighborhood around it. And 300 feet wasn't much, that was all the notice, by the way, that you get through the CUP, but it still was a very narrow amount, and that's why we suggested more. The impact of a 65-foot tower with a 20%, or a 20-foot increase to it, would have been visible and affected far more than 300 feet. It's not like some of the other structures that you're faced with, the sound, and it would have, would have been far broader. On the other hand, Mr. Torres made a very interesting point for you to consider, and that is, that in some instances, there are smaller cellular broadcast units, or whatever Mr. Kramer would call it, that companies want to put in, that you may wish to have less of a distance. So how you get that flexibility, I really think for some things, for the big towers, it's important to have more, but there is some reason why there could be some flexibility there, and I wanted to point that out for you. On page 11, getting back to Commissioner Lojowski's point, I understand further on that watershed may not have been in the, in the right place. But here, when we, when we talked about watershed and springs, the CEQA evaluation that occurred, there was a negative declaration that was prepared by Rincon Consulting. So none of the CEQA, none of these issues were considered in any way. They didn't even notice that there was a spring there. There, they didn't notice there was a preschool either, but the, the CEQA system, as I understand it, for most of these cell towers, is there's a negative declaration, there's no further inquiry. So the idea that somehow CEQA's going to pick this up is simply false from our own experience. You weren't offered those options when that, when that file came in. They simply said, there are no problems, we don't see anything, and there's no CEQA issue. So I encourage, if, if it's worthwhile to put in things, oops, pardon, put in things, like the ridge line and, and view shed, why isn't watershed and seasonal springs equally valuable to the, to the discussion? I understand that Mr. Kramer referred to giving you more options, but it seems like you're narrowing the options if you give some environmental concerns and not others. I have other comments, but I'd like to go to noise, because I'm already running out of time here. The, we're faced with a 65-foot tower that needed, that required cooling, and that cooling was going to run 24 hours a day, in an environment that's absolutely quiet at night, and we were told that, well, it just will be a low hum, and that's too bad. So it seems to me that the ambient noise needs to be taken at midnight or 2:00 AM, not at noon, and that you need to be able to control the noise for a substantial distance, because we all know that in Ojai, it seems to travel almost as fast as the gossip does. So the, the, the issue of noise is significant. There was also a point further on, I think it's on page.
To limit you, Mr. Lobel.
Okay, well, with the lights.
One last point.
With the lights. The idea that somehow it's going to go on a timer, and that's not going to affect everybody, I mean, most people set their timers to have the lights go on at night. So the notes in there were, well, to be on a timer. I don't think that that's a reasonable resolution, because most people typically use lights at night, so they would bother us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Etha Hayden.
Good evening, and I too ditto the comments of my colleagues, who have thanked you very much for putting in such incredible time, and really taking this to heart, and really looking at it. I just have a couple of comments, and maybe one of them is more directed at the attorneys, and perhaps they can answer it. But in my years of practicing law, often, we had, we didn't want to limit, because then we were limited, as Mr. Kramer has suggested. But we also often put in the language watershed, including but not limited to, and that was intended to broaden. Now, I don't know whether that works in the ordinance, but I just throw it out as a possible alternative to not putting it in. The, the issue of waiver, whether to delete it or city manager, there's been a lot of distrust in this community with regard to staff and how the cell tower issues have functioned. I would strongly suggest that you delete the waiver, that there not be someone who has. that there not be someone who has the sole power to exercise the waiver. I don't know where you're going to go with that, but that's just one suggestion. The distance requirement, 100, 300, 500, I heard 1,000 the other night. And understand that if you make it too broad, then you start disrupting the whole concept of the ordinance. I too lived right next door, do live next door to the field where the AT&amp;T tower was going to be erected. And I was 100 feet, that's not enough. So I would definitely say at a minimum 300 feet. And then I heard Jeff say, that wasn't enough. So I'm not sure where you go with that, but let me just say 100 feet was not enough. That felt like it was going to be right in your backyard. The other issue, and it's 10-14, page 10, no, it's 10-14.070, that the director may select the independent person to determine, I'm sorry? I don't know. It was the, that the director would select the person to do the report, the independent review. And I only bring up the fiasco we had last time because we had a director who started out logically moving along the appropriate path. And then that director left, and there was an interim director, and the complete, it all collapsed. And now I know that we have a very competent director, but that doesn't mean tomorrow, we're going to have a competent director. So I would just suggest that there be some other form of oversight so that these things don't fall through the cracks again as they did before. Those are basically my comments. Again, thank you. And I'm glad this is in the way, in the posture that it's in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hayden. I think I'd like to open it up to, I think we have one more speaker. Mr. Ulrich.
Good evening. William Ulrich, 487 Gridley Road. I'd like to second that comment regarding a waiver. I see no reason why a director should have a waiver at all. Now, if it seems to keep surfacing that reason, whatever the reason is, I think it's, we have a great history, not only from the perspective of directors come and go, you don't know who you got, since certainly since the directors are being hired by the city manager, not by the council. But number two, the issue is that is a defect and a weakness whenever you are trusting someone's decision-making without any oversight. And I believe we have an adequate history up to this very day of that not being such a good idea, and yet we perpetuate it. I'll quickly go over some of the other questions I have. Is Mr. Torres an AT&amp;T representative? I don't need answers right now. And if so, when did he first receive any, first receive any copy of this draft ordinance? A date certain, please. Let's see here. Page 5 of 25. Supporting said equipment, it's being supported by Mr. Summers, should be excluded. I don't see any problem with having redundancy of the city's authority over aspects of a wireless facility. A security barrier, if it is covered by other portions of the ordinance, can be just as easily covered by this ordinance specifically. Redundancy is not a bad thing. Number two. Page 7 of 29. Comment, let's see, referencing, what the heck is it? B, Section 10, 14.040B. The consideration of creating potential bias, I also take exception to because from a reality perspective, this sort of purview is a message that we want to have, I believe incorporated in this, that there is a purview beyond the director. Let's see here. Moving down to Section 10, 14.050. Regulations for facilities subject to a conditional use permit. In that case, once again, please delete the reference, the possibility of a director's waiver. Okay, page 9 of 25. Let's see here. Comment MTS 38, second one down on the right. This is not an issue of authority over other sites, but that they exist. It is a recognition. There is no, to the best of my knowledge, there is no harm in referencing there are other sites over which the city does not have purview or authority, but that they exist right across the street. It's not a bad thing in the Ojai Valley, considering the city occupies such a small part of it. Okay.
Final point?
I'm running out of time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'd like to, let's see. Allow me, one final thing. The bond, 2,000 bucks for removal, not sufficient. I don't know if anybody knows anything about construction, but you can't pull a toothpick out of the ground for 2,000 bucks. And also, if you have a bonding company providing it, bonding companies don't let go of their money for anything. Cash bond, and it needs to be much more than that. Adequate amount that will actually ensure that it's removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other further comment from the public at this point in time? I think we're going to, I think it might be appropriate, before we open up discussion amongst the commissioners here, to listen from legal counsel to address some of these points that were mentioned to the public, and we can take them. I know that they were taking good notes over there, so Mr. Summers, would you like to carry on?
Yeah, certainly. I'd be glad to respond to some of the points raised by the public. And I'll just go in order of the speakers, because that's the order of my notes. On, let's see, Mr. Lobel's comments citing the example of the 1290 Grand property, that gives you a sense of the points to keep in mind when you're setting, when you're deciding how much to recommend for the dispreference for facilities near residential zones. Keep in mind, of course, that it's a dispreference, not a prohibition. But it would send a strong signal to an applicant that having a 300-foot or 500-foot requirement as the least preferred zone would serve to indicate to them that they'd have an easier time if they found another site. On the watershed and seasonal springs point, page 11, I think, as I understand, the heart of the concern is that a previous CEQA review missed some things. It may have missed some things. I think that we should focus on assuming that the work will be of sufficient quality to ensure that it is up to snuff. And that any CEQA review worth its salt would consider watershed issues and the presence or absence of springs. And if we see one that comes before, you know, if, well, I can only speak for myself. If I see a CEQA review that comes before the commission that doesn't consider that issue, I would make my concern known to the commission and to staff ahead of time, ensuring that that is covered. I obviously wasn't here when that project was done, but that sounds like a wholly inadequate CEQA review. I still recommend, though, not adding watershed and seasonal springs to this language on the top of page 11 because the first four points all boil down to aesthetics. Protected trees are an environmental concern, but they're also an aesthetic concern. And ridgeline and scenic view sheds and landmarks are all aesthetic concerns. That's where the city has the greatest power in the wireless context. Is we have, the city has the greatest power to regulate or even deny, and several denials have been upheld by the Ninth Circuit against Telecom Act challenges, where we had a strong aesthetic basis, supported by a significant amount of evidence. But the watershed and seasonal springs is a different category. That's environmental, and that's where I think that we, by including language, making it obvious that we're focused on that concern, we run the risk of limiting the language in a way that an applicant can point to and say, well, you've only identified watershed and seasonal springs as your focus for wireless issues. So I recommend not including that here, but realizing that if a competent CEQA review will pick up watershed and spring issues. On the lighting timers, facilities aren't generally lit for the entire night or even for the business hours portion of the night, the way a lighting at a house would be. They're lit up when a maintenance worker comes to maintain the facility. And so that's why they're set on a timer. The guy opens the door, goes in, deals with it, closes the door, opens the gate to the block wall enclosure, deals with it, leaves. And the timer is set to ensure the light goes off when he leaves, or she.
Wasn't it also a motion timer slash motion?
And there's often would be a motion, you walk in, it kicks on.
That was in the language of your...
Exactly. And you'd have it where, like a tower, there might be lights if somebody starts climbing, lights would go on. Although that also is a safety concern. So I see the lighting concern as less of a, it's, the timer should have captured that point, and the reality of how the sites are built should capture that point. On, let's see, Ms. Hayden's comments, the same point I just made on the watershed and spring issues, that I think it really would be limiting, even though we could, of course, preface it with including but not limited to. But it would send a strong signal to be focused on these environmental issues, perhaps to the detriment of others. On, let's see. Mr., both Ms., Mr. Ulrich's comments. Mr. Torres is a representative for Verizon, and my impression is that the comments that are listed as by him were actually written by one of their lawyers, based on the phrasing. But they were submitted under his name, so I've marked them as Torres. But he's with Verizon, not AT&amp;T, although the carriers would all make roughly the same comments. I don't know when he received the copy. I was hired after this process was already along. But he would have, the public has been able to view the ordinance. I don't think we have issues on that regard here. And on page 5, we recommend not adding security barriers and electrical lines to the definition of a wireless facility because the wireless facility is what is viewed when it's time to come in and consider a 6409-protected expansion. So if you increase the definition of the facility to include these ancillary items, then when they come in to seek their expansion, the restrictions on width and height are measured from the edge of the facility. If the facility includes a security barrier, you've expanded the facility. You've expanded what's possibly federally protected expansions. Hence, I recommend narrowing it to just what is required, the wireless aspects. The same is true for the electrical lines point. It could expand it to all the way into the connection of the system. So that's why we recommend rejecting that. And then on page 9, comment number 38 towards the top, the alternative sites point. The focus isn't, if the city requires consideration of sites as part of the alternative analysis outside the city, then it raises the implication that we would deny them any site in the city and force them to go outside the city, which would be problematic. Potentially defensible in the right case, potentially not defensible in the right case. Recommendation is to avoid that problem by having the site analysis be focused on sites in the city with, again, the recognition that these are businesses. They're going to do what makes the most sense financially. And if they can go get an easy approval in the county, they'll consider that and avoid having to come to the city. And lastly, on the bonding point, on page, where'd that page go? Page 22. We recommend deleting the $2,000. And in fact, our proposal is to do just that, and let the amount be set by the director. I just wanted to clarify that.
The amount is set by the director or the city manager?
We've got it worded as set by the director, but we could add and approve by the city manager. That would be fine. And then the form of the bond should be approved by the city attorney, and that will capture the usual tricks used by bonding companies to avoid having to pay the bond. And I've dealt with a number of those telecom bonds for other clients. And there, there's ways to word it that are more defensible than others. And the recommendation to avoid a cash bond, or not to avoid a cash bond, but to allow other types of bonds, other than pure cash bonds, is that it avoids the city having to hold on to a few thousand dollars or 10,000 or 20,000 dollars for 30 years, as long as the facility may exist. Let someone else bear the reporting and compliance costs because the annual audit and compliance costs could, over 30 years, exceed the value of the cash. If we let the bonding company do it, they're bearing the burden of that, not us.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, I'll endorse everything that Matt has said, and I'll add some additional comments. The timer issue is a safety issue. And we want to recognize that everyone who's coming into the city should be afforded safety. So it's important to have a timer requirement. You, as the planning commission, when these projects come before, you can specify something that's appropriate for a particular design, particular location. So it makes sense to keep that in. Several of the commenters this evening talked about the waiver issue. There are two waiver issues, and I'd like to break them apart for your consideration this evening. The first is a waiver of the five-day appointment rule. The second is a waiver of the application requirements. As to the second, as I'm hearing the comments and just reading the tea leaves, it doesn't make sense to do that. As for a waiver option for the five days, let me tell you, and this was something I requested go in. I'll tell you why I requested it. The purpose of the five-day rule is to make sure that staff is not inundated by applications, that they have the time to take it. But if staff is not doing, if staff has the time available, why make an applicant wait to file their application? Having the waiver so that the director can say, you know what, I've got nothing this afternoon, come on in, is actually more defensible of the five-day rule. So that if things are backed up, that in fact, you can enforce the five-day rule, but there's a safety valve that makes it friendlier and frankly, I think more defensible to a judge. So I'd ask you to think about bifurcating the two waivers and really considering them separately for the reasons I've discussed. Regarding the selection of the consultant, I walk a fine line here, and I admit it because I do consult for a number of cities. I frankly think that a good process, which does not have to go, and should not go into this, by the way, is that the city, any city, conduct a competitive process requesting RFQs, RFPs, and that they make a decision, you have a panel of people who can do the work. All of that is absolutely facilitated by the current language within the ordinance. And that way, you have a level of safety built in. But in terms of who picks the consultant, now, this is a process like any other process within a city where it could as easily be done appropriately by staff because they would then take the contract to the city council and go through the process explaining why they want to hire this person, this firm, this entity, to be on call for applications.
Is that what, it seems to me that would be a very time-consuming task, bringing on, selecting a consultant, then bringing them on board, having them analyze the case at that point in time. And given the constraints of the short timeline, how is that efficiently even done?
Presumptively, you would...
30 days initially to do it.
That's right. But presumptively, the city would separately go through a process to create a pool of consultants that it could call on. And they'd have contracts that would simply go, annual contracts or whatever period. And then as the projects come in, they can immediately go out to the consultant assigned by the director or the city manager.
Okay. So preparation's the name of the game?
It's a workable process. I think everything else has been covered by Mr. Summers.
Okay. Any further comments, legal counsel?
Yeah, one more point on the consultant process. That would be the same process as is typically done for a CEQA issue. The city has a stable of consultants that are available for CEQA review. A project comes in, it calls up one of the members in the stable, whether it's multiple or if there's, there's a sufficiently limited number of applications, the city could just have one consultant.
So you don't see it as compromising the timeline?
No, and the trick is that the, it doesn't compromise the timeline because the consultant is already, the contract is already in place, and consultant's already picked before the application is in place. So that all they have, all the city has to do, the director gets an application, and then calls up the consultant the next day. I got an application for a facility, here's the materials, start your review. Our clock is running.
And would they be consultants approved by city council in the process?
The council would have to approve the contract. And that's where the, in other words, it's a two-step process. One is approving the consultant as part of the stable. And two is selecting which consultant will review this application. As proposed, and the first part isn't really built in this ordinance. It's the city's typical contracting process, where the city contracts with one, and the council would approve contracts with one or more consultants to be available. And then as a particular application comes in, then the director... in, then the director could select, oh, I want Bob to do this application, of the available pool of Alice, Bob, and Cindy, that are all already, already all contracted. Does that make sense?
With this process, then you would actually be, so the city would be going out looking for consultants for cell tower sites, and then having them in their stable.
Yeah, and we would recommend doing that with a typical RFP process. Put out an RFP for wireless consultants, see who submits a proposal, and then select one or more to be on call in an annual contract.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is closed, and now we're looking at discussion amongst the commissioners. Any of the items I choose to discuss?
I have an idea, because there's a lot of information. And I don't want this to take a long time, but I'm wondering if we just went through the document page by page, or some pages where we're all, you know, going to say, oh, that's fine, let's move on to the next one. But where we have issues, then we're not going to miss anything if we went through the whole document. That's just a suggestion.
I think we can move through that pretty fast.
Are we up for it? Okay. Kathy, since you brought it up, why don't you lead the way?
Well, let's just, you know, I'm starting on page one. Does anybody have any comments?
Nope.
Nope, all right, next page.
There is one comment on that, and it's providing, it's regarding effective notice. There's been a lot of conversation about effective notice. And I think the city itself has to review that process in its entirety, with other issues as well, but especially about this issue. Effective notice, it's, Mr. Lowell talks about provision regarding prompt and effective notice, and our attorney says that, you know, we have, they're expecting for us to give them some kind of direction on that. It says additionally, community development directors review, design review permits for wireless facilities could be held as a public hearing with notice provided as required by government code. Staff invites planning commission direction on this point. What did you mean by that comment, first of all? What kind of direction can we give you there?
What I meant by that comment was that, at present, the director's decision to approve an application for 6409 would not be made in public. The public would get notice of the application when it's filed, and thereafter, the decision would be made within staff. That could be modified to have the director make the decision at a director-level public hearing, which would provide for public, opportunity for public comment, and would include noticing of that public hearing, in provision, in conformance with the government code requirements, which are the typical, published in a newspaper, adjudicate circulation, post three places in the city, and notice by mail to three hundred foot, property grounds within three hundred feet. That can be added if desired, and that's what-
Can we extend that limit?
You could extend the notice requirement as well. The government code minimum is three hundred feet. It can be extended as desired.
Thank you.
I think it's worth discussing extending that.
The radius of the notification?
Right, the radius of the notification. I mean, it could be five hundred feet.
Well, I think the Grand Avenue is a great example of where three hundred feet isn't enough in terms of notification. So I would put, at least put five hundred feet out there.
Can we, can we actually change that and not be presumed to be making a special case for cellphone?
Right.
It is a special case.
No, I know, but I'm saying inappropriately so.
I think that that, an expanded notice requirement would be defensible, because it picks up the aesthetic elements, where the city has a broader, broader range of power, as opposed to requiring a particular substantive requirement on the application that we don't require on cell towers. Do you have a different opinion on that? And in terms of, if we want to add this provision, where it would go is three places. It'd be on page seventeen and page eighteen, subsections D, E, and F, which are the three sets of findings for the three types of section 6409 facilities. And in each one, it would be the director, new language, comma, at a publicly noticed hearing must approve, and then a new sentence after the end of that sentence, public notice shall be provided to properties within three hundred, five hundred, it sounds like five hundred, five hundred feet of the subject parcel.
What were the, what were the subsections there you quoted?
Oh.
Seventeen, eighteen.
Page seventeen and page eighteen, subsections D, E, and F, which are the three sets of findings for designer review permit approval.
Okay.
And it's the same language would be in each of the first paragraphs of those three.
Okay, all right.
Steve, can I recommend that?
I think I need to remind the commission, though, that even in a public hearing situation, if a project qualifies under 6409, the director, regardless of the public testimony that comes in, will still have to make a specific finding. So while it certainly would be good to keep the public informed, I want to make sure that there's no expectation that the public could change an outcome where federally mandated.
For 6409A.
Which is all of these three. These three are just the 6409 permits.
Right.
A conditional use permit must be approved by the commission in a typical public hearing, and there is discretion.
It's important to make the distinction between the two.
Certainly.
I think the commission understands that.
Chair Foster, can I ask a question? Are there any unintended consequences with regard to the shot clock in that process? Are we bogging ourselves down and fighting disaster?
We would be decreasing the available amount of time, because it'd have to be a ten-day notice under the government code. So there's ten days out of the clock, lost on notice, where we'd have to have, the director would need to have noticed the hearing and everything ready on the forty-ninth day after the application is received, with any incomplete time told out of that. And then the days forty-nine through fifty-nine would be the ten-day notice, day sixty, the hearing and decision. And then, keep in mind, of course, that this, that clock and the director's decision would also have to include issues of the building permit and the design review permit. So built into that forty-nine days is also reviewed by the building department.
Unfortunately, Congress has put us in a position of not really allowing us to take and consider public input if it falls within the box of 6409.
So, so the only reason we would implement it is to be above the, above reproach?
It's not, I don't think it's an issue above reproach, because all of the applications are going to be published on the website. So public notice at the beginning of the process will be given, and where we, you know, again, this is a balancing of public expectations. If you have fifty people showing up, and fifty people are opposing a project, and then the director says, I've taken your input, approved, because I have no choice. Where is that, how does this benefit the public? I think giving the public the information at the beginning of the process so that they're aware of the project, and perhaps the public will find some reason to suggest to the director that it's not 6409 is probably a better process, because it should occur at the front of the process, not at the back end, when there's no time left to make a decision.
So how do we implement that? How is that different than what this, this process would be?
Well, this process provides for notice of the applications, and the public always has the opportunity to talk with the director, come and review the file. So it seems to me that far more important element is giving them notice at the beginning, so that they can come in and independently review, if they wish, the project, because that's the time to do it.
It sounds, if I'm just getting this correct, and it seems to make sense, is to have the noticing, we could have it five hundred feet or whatever number we decide to select, but we don't really need to have a notice for a public hearing, because the director's going to be making the choice anyway.
The director probably won't make any choice at all, because by the time it gets to the point, the director will either have determined the project doesn't qualify for 6409-
Right.
-and rejected the application, in which case that resolves it and goes back for, it goes with a denial without prejudice, as Mr. Summers talked about that. Or the director is going to say, tick, 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 granted.
Right, in which case, there won't be a public hearing. Yeah, there's no need for it. I mean, it's just, yeah, it's a mute.
It's, it's an expense.
And a time, a huge time component also.
But also because of what Mr. Summers said about the noticing requirement, it pushes all of these reviews to occur even faster.
Right.
And frankly, as someone who does reviews and works with directors all the time, the last thing you want to do is to push a project to compress it. You want to take the maximum review time. Amazing how stuff falls out the very last minute. And we'd rather have that minute on the fifty-ninth day rather than the forty-ninth day.
Okay, so amongst ourselves, what do we?
I'm satisfied with that explanation from the attorney.
I just, I want clarification. So we're talking about 6409A, we're talking about design review. What about in cases of notification and cases of conditional use permit?
Everything that you've done before still applies.
Okay.
It's, it, it, once it's out of 6409, it gets back into a rational world. Excuse my description of it, but, but it's, it's just that easy. So yes, if it's, if it's conditional, number one, we have longer to deal with it, because the minimum time is ninety for a non-6409A co-location, or a hundred and fifty days for new application.
I see, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay, next.
All right, page two, anything? Let's go right through them, three. All right, let's go on to page four. There's a couple notes that we might want to look at. I think that was handled, that had to do with clarifying federal FCC, exactly.
And Article twenty and chapter two.
Right. Okay. Now we're on page five. I know the question had come up, and that was about the security barriers and the electric lines. I'm okay with the strike.
Which one are we looking at here?
That was one.
Oh, right.
I am as well.
Okay. I thought it was a good point, that if you do include those, then all of a sudden you've expanded the area.
Exactly.
I think that would be a real problem.
So we're good with that. Let's make a check. Oops. My pencil went out on me. All right, page six. Wesley, this is where you had the comment.
This is the Article twenty.
I still think this is confusing.
You want to go over it again?
No, I mean, you know, I take their point, but is this the first place where we're talking about director waivers?
Yes.
Okay, so is this where we should start to confab about that? Okay.
Yeah, this would be the first opportunity. And of the two types of waiver that Mr. Kramer discussed, this waiver on the bottom here is the application meeting requirement, and not the, as opposed to the-
We have both here. So it's the top of B, though.
Oh, we do, you're right.
Planning commissioners-
Where are we talking?
Chair, we're on page six now.
Mm-hmm.
Ten dash fourteen dot oh four O, B, permits middle.
Okay.
If you adopt the recommendation I offered earlier, you would keep the first waiver at the beginning of that section. And you would also keep the, oh, I'm sorry, you know what, let me, let me explain something that we didn't talk about before. I inserted the word endeavor here, and the reason why is that the previous language had a hard stop. Every application request had to have an appointment within five days. And endeavor was a recognition of exactly what I talked about, but on the other side of it, which is if, if there are plans scheduled to come in and so forth, that we might have to push it out. But this was, this was a safety valve adding the word endeavor. In terms of the requirement at the bottom of B, that was actually the, that's an excellent idea, thank you. The director may propose waiving the required appointment in assigned writing with notice to the city manager. And I would end the sentence there, so that the, so that, so that there's a record that there was a waiver made. But again, the director should have the ability to schedule his or her own appointments reasonably, and going to the councils, it's frankly excessive. So I would recommend that you put a period after city manager and strike to the end of B from there.
So that is, yeah, there's a lot of numbers, sections ten, forty, B, yeah, how, how are we going to keep?
Well, you know, I-
If you go section by subsection and-
Right, I think if we, yeah, right, if we go through the whole document, then, then we, I think we're going to probably have to do a second pass, just to make sure we're clear on anything that we're taking notes on, or that we want to strike or change or add. And then maybe-
I think there's any other way to do it.
Then staff, hopefully, maybe we can, I don't know if we need to take that five-minute break or whatever, and have it compiled.
Yeah, who's compiling this list that we're making?
What we're, what I have been doing is, so far, I haven't seen any changes to our recommendations, but if one occurs, I'll hand note it on the black line. And then once we've gone through everything, then I'll go back through the black line, and that way it'll be clear what the motion is. The motion would be to approve the black line as the recommendation of the council with X changes.
But this last strikeout is what we're considering right now?
So there is one item on the list.
Right.
That's right.
On your list, okay.
And we have to decide this.
Okay, what I'm suggesting is, is that we discuss that item as we go, instead of going back through the document again.
That would be more efficient.
Yeah.
I, I'm in favor of the strikeout at the point of the city manager, page seven of twenty-six.
I'm also.
Same here.
I concur.
I agree too.
Agreed.
Page seven. Right, there's another waiver.
Focusing on oh-five-O-A, that's the other side of the waiver provision.
Right. Well, I, I'm going to say that I'm in favor of delete, of not having the waiver, as you suggested earlier.
Agreed.
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 John?
Delete, we're deleting the waiver.
Okay.
Yes.
So we're deleting, for clarity, the added section that says, the director may propose waiving an application all the way through to council members, period. That will be deleted in the black line that we'll come back to you. Are we correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm afraid we can't at this time.
Mr. Chair, would you please reopen the public hearing?
Okay, public hearing reopened. You said, delete the part director may propose, but you did not say delete the part that it says unless the director waives.
I think we're discussing the whole sentence as, as it's written.
I'm just saying what he said.
Right. And actually, that's a good point, because I know that I, during the public comments section, I did strike that out. So you're, I think, referring to unless the director waives a requirement in assigned writing? Yeah. Okay, good.
Public.
Okay, so are we talking about striking out the whole paragraph?
That would mean that that, no, the paragraph would read just conditional use permit application materials, period. It would become a- It would become a header instead of a paragraph, striking everything following.
Okay, got it.
Okay, public comment closed. Continue.
Page eight. We did have a strike on this one, I know. Well, we had a couple comments. The strike that I had was on the statement of purpose. And that was the last sentence, propagation, am I reading that right? Because I wrote so...
Propagation.
Yeah, maps, yeah, shall not be required for sites designed to improve capacity as set forth in the technical objective.
Your attorneys recommend that you strike that sentence and will strike it if you so consent.
That is one that wasn't put in the black line. I, I recommended rejection and so I didn't include that sentence in the black line. I just forgot to put the strike through here.
Okay.
Of course, you could add it, but it's good to have confirmation with striking it.
Okay.
For clarity, would you please give us your direction on, on the sentence that is in the red line version, please?
So we want to strike it, correct? I'm in agreement.
So we're going to strike propagation maps through to objective.
Thank you very much.
Page nine, and this has to do with the number of sites. Originally, we had, you know, it's funny because I wrote through. I scratched so many things off, I can't see what I've got underneath. There we go, erase, erase the, the strikeout. Anyway, we originally, we had five in here. The consultant from Verizon had put it down to two. I'm in agreement that we keep it at five.
Let's hear from Commissioners. Yay, nay?
I just had one quick question. You talked about a process by which they could be exempt from the five. They could, they could go to four. Under, under what mechanism would they be able to claim an exemption and go with less than five?
The exemption would be, if they can make strong showing, under the general exemption section, which I'm trying to find. There it is, page 24, Section 10, 14, 120. Which is the broad exception where if they can make a showing that the Telecom Act requires approval of this site or say approval of these three options, then we could, that would be the basis to relax the other two. And that's subject to the review and approval of the Planning, Mission, and Council.
So we're in favor of keeping five?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a grammatical thing. I believe there's an E missing on the word rationale in that last sentence.
Where is that, Commissioner Mer?
It should say, factually detailed written rationale.
Thank you.
Other than rational, yeah, okay, got it.
I like to make a note. I heard Mr. Lobel's comment on the noise. I think we've had before us also, we're going to be looking at the lighting and the noise ordinances again. And I think the ambient noise at night is something to really look at. I'm not sure what it reads right now, but I think that's a very important point.
Okay, yeah, because it's not, we don't have a section that actually addresses noise in this ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
Was there...
There's nothing to do on that now, but...
Right.
Do we need to make kind of a direction to staff that we want that pursued?
Well, we're going to recommend that, well, we have a recommendation to the city council to review the heights, but we can also review, I put in there noise and lighting ordinances as well.
For clarity, all of this is a review and recommendation to the council, so you can't request us to do anything. But, but it goes up through the same process.
We can recommend.
Recommend.
We recommend to council, council, the city manager and...
Right. I think that's a point well taken, Commissioner, because I personally have had the experience where middle of the night, 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM, a pump comes on and it echoes through the entire valley.
I live, I live close to the high school and when that filter goes on for the pool.
So there has to be...
It wakes us all up.
So that's good that we have that experience, so we can curtail it here. Okay, next.
Before we go to the next page, one more point I want to clarify clarity on. At the top, the question of including any potential sites outside the city or not. We, we recommend not adding that provision. I just wanted to get a direction on that.
That makes total sense because otherwise, we don't have any jurisdiction over what's outside the city, so what's the point?
Well, the only point might be, I'm wondering, I mean, we don't have any authority over that, but wouldn't that be sort of compel them to do their homework? And, I mean, not that putting it in the county really makes a big difference. I mean, it's sort of like, there are neighbors too. I mean, it's not like...
Yeah, that's going to, that's going to save us.
It's not really going to save us anything, but I mean, regardless of whether or not we have jurisdiction, is there any benefit? I'm just asking, is there any benefit to making them come up with all five sites somewhere?
There's actually a detriment. Because when you consider sites that cannot be approved by this body, you raise flags that attorneys for wireless companies would love to grab onto. And you give reasons for judges to say that you've overstepped because you're forcing them out of the city. Regardless of the outcome, it could be perfectly valid for every other reason. This is not a provision that we recommend you allow to go into the ordinance. And we'd like your direction, please.
I say we remove it from the ordinance.
As written.
As written.
I agree.
I agree.
Agreed.
Agreed.
All right, and this is the one regarding the hierarchy. In other words, so this is, yeah, guidelines and standards in general and predominantly on B, preferred locations. So I guess the question is, do we want to keep it as is or do we want to look at rearranging that hierarchy?
I think Mr. Wirick gave us some good direction on this. We could start there with our discussion.
Well, there, I'd like the point of clarification on that then, because there's two fives.
Yeah, I think one of them is to be a two.
Which one is supposed to be the two?
There's a typo of some sort there under the, your, Mr. Wirick's comments.
Mr. Wirick's hierarchy does, has two fives and a missing two.
I think you just replaced the missing number here. I have the order, the order should be agricultural zones, one. Industrial zones, two. City areas, three. Golf courses, four. Commercial zones, five. Open spaces, six, and residential zones, seven.
Is this Mr. Wirick's recommendation or yours?
Yes.
Okay.
The government or...
Yeah, we're missing one.
Oh, I see, okay. So that one needs to have a number. Okay, now I get what we're doing.
Does anybody know what the actual order should be, what was the actual order suggested by Mr. Wirick?
Mr. Wirick's comments listed here are the ones that were in the file that I received. He is present, so we may, the chair may ask him to clarify.
Let's open up the public...
Well, it's got two fives.
Okay, so for the sake of clarity, Chester, would you repeat that?
We're still missing, we're still missing a number.
Okay, the way, what I had meant, sorry, was four being the most, then industrial, then city.
And what about the other governmental entities?
That...
That would be right after city?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we read them in order, please?
Sorry, my mistake.
Can you just clarify what you meant? But in order, you know, whether you read backwards from the top of the thing or just go one, two, three, four, because we need eight and we only have seven.
One is what I meant, and for, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to elaborate. Agricultural number is first, is what I suggested. Industrial, number two. Parcels owned and controlled by the city, number three. Parcels owned and controlled by other governmental entities, four. All right, then golf courses, five. Then, I think we're just back into the commercial zones, then open space and residential.
I'd like to discuss, thank you, Mr. Wirick.
Should we hear his rationale?
Well, you know, I would like to talk about the parcels that are controlled by the city because there's a lot of, we have a lot of pocket parcels. And some of them are right dead center of residential neighborhoods. So if that becomes a higher priority than a golf course, I might have an issue with that.
I thought the attorneys mentioned that the hierarchy may not matter as much as we think it's going to be. Can you remind us what you said on that issue?
Certainly. The hierarchy isn't a list of permitted to prohibited. It's a list of propose, of a preferred order. But the applicant's going to come in with a particular gap in coverage they're seeking to fill or for a new facility, say, not a gap, but a capacity issue could be the case. And there, that will exist in a particular location. So this will give them a guide as to given where they need to have a site or where they would like to have a site to fill their business issues. This gives them a guide to the city's preference. But if in any particular case, they can make a showing that the only facility that would fill, to be the least intrusive means to close a significant gap in their service is in a less preferred zone, then the city would be forced to approve it. And then, of course, for a 60, and this is, this section is just specific to the CUPs because, of course, for the 6409, it's, it's modification to an existing facility. And citing, citing the new facilities is irrelevant, but, so do keep that in mind. It's, it's an important tool for the city and for applicants. And really what it does is it serves as a valuable signal to the applicants when they're sitting down in their internal process to decide, oh, we need a site in Ojai. Where do we want to put it? Where should we propose it? They'll look at this and they'll say, I'll have a much easier time if I find an ag zone and a willing property owner. But if I can't, maybe there's no one in the ag zones, no one's willing to have a site and they can't, they can't buy the property, then they'll look at industrial. And the same thing, when the city's considering the alternative sites analysis, the zones provide a guide to accept or reject proposed alternatives. But it's certainly not a list of prohibited zones.
Okay, Mr. Wirick.
Quick comment, Mr. Foster, direct your concern. I was thinking about, that's the importance of C. Because if it's a lot like the city owns on Montgomery, but it's all in, with residences all around, it automatically goes to bottom of the list.
Because of adjacency of residency?
Because of C, right. So that's the importance of crafting C properly.
I see.
So that if a city property is right next to residences, automatically goes to least preferred.
Good point. Thank you for clarifying that.
I have a question too on the zoning. So for instance, I went on to the zoning map and, you know, I looked and I thought, okay, well, where are some potential sites that were, hopefully, you know, as far away from the residential areas? And a lot of them happened to be on the PL zoning. Can we actually have an exclusion under the PLs or one of the zoning? For instance, PL includes like parks and schools, which I would prefer not to have it there or not to see it there. But I see there's some other locations that are, you know, very isolated and that could work. Is that a possibility to, to do that or not with exceptions?
If I understand what you're asking, you're asking, can you exclude an entire zone?
Not, not exclude the entire zone, but certain, certain areas within a zone. For instance, okay, I'm looking at the PL zoning.
What you're talking about is spot zoning effectively. It's kind of the equivalent of spot zoning.
Yeah, maybe, I'm just wondering if you can do that or not.
And I'm, I, I'm very concerned about that.
Okay.
As a practical matter, for, for public lands, they still need to have a lease to get in. The only thing they don't need a lease to get into is, is the right-of-way. So there are different, there are different protections that are built in there. I think you go down a slippery slope if you try to do that.
Okay.
I'll echo that concern. The zones are structured on a rational basis in that, as to which parcels are in which zone. Breaking apart within a zone has less of a rational basis.
Okay, I'm, I'm good.
It's an easy loss to lose. I, further note, in terms of the city properties, a lease for a city property would require approval by the council. Independent of the wireless permit, but the lease agreement itself would have to be approved by the council. So there's that check as well.
That would come before. Normally it comes before because you have to have an owner sign a permit application. And the owner in that case would be the city. And the city would not sign an application to go onto public lands without a lease being in place.
This would be part of a complete submittal or for a conditional use permit?
For, for an applicant to come in and request a permit, that permit burdens the land. So the requirement is that the owner of the property sign for it. It's one of the reasons why we added the property owner as one of the people responsible for removing the site because they accepted the benefit of the permit itself. It, it's, there are different processes that go on, but what we're simply saying is, before a site could ever come before you for PL, it would have gone to the city council already.
It would have to be previously approved by city councils.
I'm looking at these ag areas and I just am seeing a lot of sensitive areas here. I'd hate to see, you know, a giant cell tower in the middle of the Crotona property. Right beneath the Crotona property. I mean, I'm wondering if we, if we defer back to prioritizing the city and the governmental entities. And as you say, where did it go? You know, crafting it in with the residential piece, I don't know. Somehow it feels like to prioritize a city and a governmental entity seems sort of by, just by definition, there's more control there. And then if we defer, you know, if that's circumscribed by the residential requirement that we craft below, I don't know, I just feel sort of better about that than I do looking at these beautiful ag areas that are in other people's backyards. I don't know.
I agree. I thought, I'm wondering if maybe we could, can we just combine open space and agricultural zones into one point? Because essentially, I mean, I'm wondering what the difference really is.
It's a different zoning, right? OS, OS is a different zoning.
Okay.
Isn't it?
Well...
Ag zones and, and open space zones are different zones. And there's also the element of, open space is generally protected open space, it'll remain open space. Ag zones could be developed at a later date. Depending on, of course, the particulars of that parcel and what the property owner wants and if there's a Williamson Act contract in place and so forth. But from a planning perspective, they're fairly different. I mean, they look, from an aesthetic perspective, they're similar. It's flat, open, green land. But from a planning perspective, they're fairly quite different.
I have, go ahead, Chester.
I was just going to ask Rosalie, where would, where would we put then agricultural zones in the list? So let's say we're making our list right now.
Well, I was just going to comment that, you know, I personally would prefer the first priority being the industri, our industrial zones. You know, our, our... Our M-zone, you know, areas and that sort of thing.
See a cell tower, just see a cell tower going in on Bryant Street and all the people in Persimmon Hill saying, oh my God, you've ruined my view.
Well, then you have the residential, but...
Then what we really need to really dial in is, you know, how many feet away can you be? Because it's, it's challenging, you know, you go on to this map. And it's, I'm a big proponent of agriculture, but I also almost see that there, you know, the spaces are large. And, you know, there's already some camouflage on there.
In the ag.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is tough.
I don't think there's no perfect answer.
There isn't, there isn't, yeah.
I don't. And that's why I recommend, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Does anybody else have a recommendation of where to put ag?
I think it's key what council said, it's really, they're going to pretty much do whatever they want. You know, I mean, the, the cellphone company, I mean, we can make this recommendation. So I think it, to a certain degree, I don't know how much time we should spend arguing over, you know, is it point six or point seven?
I agree, and I think the more important, more important point is the distance down below of the 300 to 500 feet.
All of them is going to make the difference.
So I, my recommendation is that we adopt the list by Councilmember Wirick. And we... And we increase it from 300, well, we make sure it's 500 feet instead of 300 feet.
It's 500 feet. Let's go around the-
Sure.
No. I want to, I want to ask another question about crap, if we're, if we're talking about this, also at the same time talking about this paragraph C. Is there, is there any wisdom in, which Mr. Lobel referred to via Mr. Torres, in, in sort of making that a two-tier process? Where, yeah, there's, for a larger tower, something with a larger impact, more power, that there's a greater distance, but we allow some flexibility for smaller devices? You know?
The devices on the sides of buildings and things like that?
Well, something, something that would be, you know, maybe far less obnoxious.
Almost a size-distance ratio.
Yes, well, something. I mean, obviously we can't overthink it too much.
I mean, yeah, exactly.
Do we need to allow ourselves some flexibility there?
It's a good question for a legal counsel. What's your take on that?
Anytime you have a distant setback from residential, you have two potential issues at play. One we can talk about, one we can't. So let's talk about the one that we can, which is aesthetics. Because the other one, we can't. What you're talking about seems very rational, because you're saying if it has less of an impact, if it's camouflage, doesn't raise the height, remembering that under 6409 it could later on. But, but still, if it, if it goes in and doesn't raise the height, then maybe you are more flexible. That sounds like a good path to consider going down. Because clearly that's not concerning ourselves with the other thing that we can't talk about, which I like. Matt?
So how would you, how would you-
One way to put that into text might be to have the language as proposed, but add stealth. So that notwithstanding the proposed facilities listed in Section 10, 1450B1B, a proposed stealth facility within 300 feet from a resident, or within 500 feet from a residential use, measured from the nearest point of the proposed facility to the property line of the parcel, inclusive of the residential use, shall be defined as the least preferred location. And then a new sentence that would read the same language, except without the word, with non-stealth, rather than stealth. And that way, the goal there is- Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah. Do we want to state one for, for both then? Oh, I'm seeing what you're saying. In other words, that the, that makes, Mr. Kramer's comment makes sense. So that it would be, notwithstanding the preferences above, a proposed non-stealth facility within three, within 500 feet, shall be defined as the least preferred location. So that if an applicant comes in with a stealth facility, then we're looking just at the hierarchy of zones. And then that could be 300, 500, whatever amount makes sense.
Now, is stealth adequately defined in this code?
I believe it is.
I didn't see it in the definitions.
Creating loophole for residential zones, would be preferencing residential?
No, still, it's not in the definitions at all.
While they're looking that up, I can also envision at some point in the future, little tiny cell towers on top of telephone poles, all around in residential areas.
Right, that's where it's probably going.
I would hate to write something into this that precludes that possibility, because, you know, it may be something that in the future we want to do that.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, if you're interested in doing this, here's what we recommend. Direct us to make that modification, to embody your, your comments, and let us do the technical tweaking between now and the, and the city council. Remember, there's still another complete bite at this apple. And then we'll also add the definition of stealth to go along with it. The city council will have its opportunity to review it at that point.
So Commissioner Merck's statement that, what this intent allows us, if there, if there is a stealth device available in the future that, that is not obtrusive, we have the option to go there.
We understand that you're talking about a very, a very high standard of stealth. Not just, some of it says it's stealth.
All right, thank you.
I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
If that is your direction, we'll make the note that we'll make that addition to take it forward to the city council.
I would agree to that.
Yes.
Yes.
We're unanimous.
Yes.
Okay, so we still need to fix the order.
Can we just read that one again?
What, what order? No, we, we had-
The hierarchy, which you had written reflecting-
Well, we were just going to adopt Wirek's-
Yes.
Could I have a suggestion?
List, because we decided that, well-
You done? Just a little bit.
I would like to propose, and maybe slightly retracting what I said earlier, maybe we should just adopt it as is and let city council change the order. If Mr. Wirek, like, wants to change the order at city council, maybe that should be the time it should be done. I mean, I personally, I mean, I don't, I really don't want, personally, agricultural zones to be the most preferred location. I mean, I know, everything else kind of bleeds away. That's just my new evolution since we've been speaking.
I concur.
I would agree with that too. I don't think the order is really that important. It's, we're, we're saying these are preferred sites, and this is the order in which we prefer them. But that doesn't really mean anything. It's not like we're saying you can't do something in one place or anything like that. So I think-
I just think that there's some sort of logic to talking about city property and government entities before you start talking about everything else. And I like-
Well, this sounds like we can just change the agricultural.
Or, or leave it as it is and let the city council determine what, what their priorities would be.
I could also point out that the one cellphone tower that we actually have approved in the last 15 years is on the Caltrans property at the Y. And that didn't affect anybody, and it was very nice to have that option.
I, I, going along with Commissioner Lojowski's recommendation, I think we just leave it as it is and, and let city council make that determination.
Well, can we, but we can advise, I mean, I, I like the order the way that it exists as well. I mean, that would be, I would like to do more than to say, well, you guys change it if you want. I'd rather make a stronger recommendation that we like it this way. If you, if we do, I like it this way.
Yeah, and it sounds like we just want to reposition the agriculture.
I think we are, it's understood, mm-hmm.
Okay, so what, what do you propose? Where do you propose to put the agricultural in that list?
Did you actually want to move something, Commissioner, or?
I mean, I, I like the list the way that it is now.
Okay.
Oh, that's existing here.
Yeah.
So I think, yes.
Get that direction. We are still looking for a direction on Subsea below that, as to whether you want to direct us to craft a, a stealth flexibility.
Right, I thought we agreed to do that.
Yes.
Want to make sure because-
We want clarity.
Yeah.
You have it.
Thank you very much.
Please, please write the language up, okay? So are we clear on the hierarchy then? We're leaving it as it is? We're approving, or recommending as it is? And it's up to the city council to- And it's 500 feet. And the 500-foot rule.
Well, they're going to-
Well, that's the stealth.
Yes.
Okay.
And the direction is 500 foot on that, right on the tree?
Correct.
Okay.
Which will only come in-
Page 11.
That'll only come into play, the 500 feet, if it's not stealth.
That's right.
Stealth, yeah.
You got it. Kathy, page 11.
Page 11. All right, so up at the top of the, the page, we had looked at the extended above the ridge line, I think, and then the impact of a scenic view shed, which included materially adversely impacted scenic view shed. And then required the removal or relocation of a protected tree, also that it be on the same parcel as a landmark property. And then the, the question had come up about watershed and seasonal springs. I'm fine with the above ones. The question I did have about the watershed was, if you look, if you, at the true definition of a watershed, the entire valley is in a watershed. So you can like, look at, you know, the EPA has a definition of it. I mean, it's basically, we're surrounded by wa, mountains, and everything that falls within that mountains goes down to the valley. So it's, as much as I'd like to say, yeah, protect the watershed, I don't think we could get away with it legally if you looked up the definition.
I like the language as it is.
Right.
As it was presented to us.
But at the same time, you know, I heard members of the public, and Mac, you brought this up too, and I, and I kind of kept, you know, eating away at me. It was a thing about CEQA was supposed to cover it. And it was missed in the last round with AT&amp;T. And I know that you had mentioned, you know, you'd look at it and you'd catch it. But if you're not there and we're not here, how can we put something into the document? Or do we need to, that would cover anything that gets missed? And the cha- That's huge.
That's proving a negative, but I don't think we need to add something to the language. I think we can rely on CEQA's already existing extensive language and extensive body of case law that would be very hard to capture in a few words. And, and we can hope that all future consultants do as they should. And then the multiple layers of review should catch that.
And that's the issue, I, you know, I think, you know, the intention is good, but somehow it didn't happen. So I'm just wondering, yeah, is there a check and balance? Just, we're it.
You gotta go forward?
Yeah.
If we focus on, on failures in the past, we are not going to move forward to do, put a good process in place. And frankly, the checks and balances that we've talked about, and, and the, the, you know what? You know what I'm going to say. Consider it said.
Okay, okay.
Well, yeah, I, I have, I mean, could, couldn't, would a blanket be any significant scenic resources? Or is that too broad? Are we just inviting something?
You know what, there's always significant scenic resources.
Wasn't that number two materially an impact, a scenic view?
Oh, scenic view, okay, sorry.
I mean, it's, I think that, I think the design discretion, we exercise a design discretion, is our authority to do this, is our tool that we have to work with ultimately.
We balance it all the way down from the pink moment to everything else. And I, and I, I say that specifically because that's everywhere in the valley.
Oh.
Well-
Good point, good point.
The west, the east end of the valley. So that's why we added the-
That explains that.
That's why we added the materially and adversely. Because we felt that was defendable.
I, I just want to say one thing on the next, the number two item there. I really appreciate whoever came up with the requirement of the 10-2.805F2, which is a design guideline standard for fence, walls and fences. Because previously it was just like wooden fence or block wall. This keeps it within the parameters of the city's guidelines, design guidelines. So, and I've seen it pop up a couple times, so whoever's responsible for that, thank you. Kathy?
I mean, I guess the next one would be under number two. The last sentence was the stealth and concealment techniques do not include incorporating faux-tree designs of a kind substantially different than the surrounding live trees. And then stealth and conceal, this was a strikeout. Stealth and conceal, excuse me, concealment techniques not include, what's a then is not, that sentence doesn't sound right, incorporating fake trees of a kind. And that last one was striked out, or strikeout. So I'm good with, with that.
Me too.
Agree.
Anything else on this, on this page? There is issues with the height, but we know that's going to be taken care of. We're going to make the recommendation with the ordinance, I think we're good on that.
That's right, mm-hmm.
Okay, and then page 12. That was the false tree issue, I'm, I'm good with what's on there.
Yep.
Page 13. No, this is back to the-
500.
The number, yeah, so we want to get our 500 back in there.
Well, five has been striked and 200 has been-
Well, that was the recommend, that was a comment by Mr. Torres. I believe to change the five to a two, and on the previous one, we decided we wanted the-
I think they're different. This is a setback from other facilities. The other one was a, a distance from residential zones.
Okay, so let's-
So what is the, is there a decision to be made there that's beneficial to us?
The answer is, it's not beneficial to you, but it saves you some lawsuits. And I'll explain.
To keep it with a two?
We're suggesting 200 feet, because from a technical standpoint, we know the carriers need that. To go to 500, we believe is not easily defendable.
So the 200 would be appropriate in, in industrial areas, say, from one boundary to another? And that, would it, or?
This provision will most often come up when you have a string of facilities along a road. Because this is about facilities on the right-of-way. And the question is, how far, how much does the separation have to be from facility to facility? Whether it's 200 or 500. And that really is up to you. As Mr. Kramer noted, the recommendation is for 200, although in the black line it's worded as 500, but we can modify to match your decision.
When does this become applicable? When, with the micro antennas, is that where you see it every 200 feet or so?
Yeah, the, the distributed antenna systems, the DAS sites, are the smaller sites that'll be every couple hundred feet.
Is that, is that pretty typical of, I mean, not knowing the tech, understanding the technology? Is 200 feet how that works, or? Well, not getting too involved in.
It's very common to have poles spaced about 150 feet.
Okay.
And, and we selected 200 to make sure that we didn't have, well, we think 200 is right, because it, it will not produce a sudden increase, a bunch of poles and back down. It, it spaces them out. Remembering again, that upon a substantial, or a, a clear and convincing evidence standard, they can show us that this would somehow prevent them from doing what they're legally obligated to do. This is a good compromise. It's, it's one of the things where we actually think that it's more defendable to go to a lower number.
Thank you.
I'm good with it, yep.
I think we're all on board.
We have one, we have one additional comment on that, which is, Mr. Summers had, had suggested deleting or rejecting the where feasible provision. And again, that's, that's the exception that swallows the rule. So our recommendation is that you direct us to, to reject that rec, that comment that appears in the red line.
Questions? Makes sense?
Yep, let's-
Okay, delete where feasible? Okay.
Anything else on that page? Right, remember on 14?
Getting there.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the only issue that we looked at was item 10, that had, that was the wildlife, water, and ecology, and then similar topic to what we've already discussed. So we're okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah, agreeing.
Anything else? 15. This can't, here's the waiver again, but I think, did we agree across the board, or was it just on that one page regarding the waivers?
I think we, well, we, I think, at least in principle, deleted waivers for, for, for the applicant, application process.
That was my understanding. So this would be another one where we would delete-
Right.
Everything after, all the text here. It would just be the title, designer view permit application materials, period.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, opposed? Okay.
That was the noise, but I think, once again, we got that hopefully handled in our recommendation to look at the ordinance. Anything else? 17. Oh, go back. Yeah.
On page 16?
On 16, number nine, hold on, I just want to-
That was the noise one.
Yeah, so.
Number nine, that, that's part of the application, they have to come in with the information. But that will be, that will be to evaluate- information, but that will be, that will be to evaluate against whatever the generally applicable ordinance is. So it, it, it needs to stay in. It actually benefits the city.
So 17. I know we had on D, that had to do with, let's see, the director must approve a design review permit application to change an existing wireless tower on given, on private property when the director finds all of the following. We were good with that. And then, of course, we looked at number seven. Let's see, the proposed change does not violate conditions of approval.
This comes out of the SEC.
Right, so basically what we went over earlier at the beginning of the meeting, I think we, we were good with that. We covered it.
If an existing project violates its permits, its conditions of approval under the original permit, it falls out of 6409. You need this in here so that we can then reject an application in that condition, and frankly, you'd be surprised how often that, that can occur.
So I'm, I'm good with that.
Good.
Okay.
Everybody else? Okay, 18. Any comments? Let's get on that. No?
What is this now?
You had a note, Stephen, huh?
Oh, that's all 6409, so.
Okay.
It's mandated.
Okay, 19. Nope, 20. This was about the, the insurance.
And it's, it's striked in here, is that correct, as written?
We ask you to confirm that it does not belong here.
Right. Because it's covered.
It, it's not appropriate for an ordinance.
Exactly.
So we, we would ask your confirmation that, that you agree that it should be struck here.
I'm in agreement with that.
Wouldn't this also be another reason to support, to prioritize city and, city property and government entities?
No, no, because whatever the insurance requirements are on any type of property is the business of the property owner. It's not the business of the city to set insurance requirements like this for this type of ordinance. We, we do it in permits and things like that.
Right.
Not here.
But what I'm saying is, the city then, if, if the city property is prioritized in that, or, you know, prioritized, and that's where they end up because they see that that's a number one preference, isn't that where the city has the ability to impose an insurance requirement?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
But not on private property.
And keep in mind-
But city properties, right.
And keep in mind, as a practical matter, most folks who are leasing space to a carrier are sufficiently sophisticated to build in insurance requirements into their lease, to ensure that the property owner, the private property owner is protected against the carrier. Not, because carriers are, of course, relatively deep pockets, but getting money out of them can be a challenge, having an insurance carrier around.
Is the city indemnified in any way when it's on private property, or is there any reason that we should be, or concerned about that?
The city's indemnified against a challenge to the application approval. If, if the city approves an application, whether 6409 or not, and that application is challenged, then the applicant has to pay the city's defense costs, including attorney's fees. But that's the only indemnification to the city. And, 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 that's the only way in which the city is vulnerable to a challenge. If the city approves a tower, and then the tower falls over and causes an accident, the lawsuit is against the property owner and the carrier and-
Okay.
-everybody else who's touched the tower, but there'd be no basis against the city.
Thank you.
Good. All right, page 21.
I'm sorry to beat the dead horse.
Oh, sorry.
Where are we?
May we formally have your direction?
Oh, yes.
Just like that, please?
Yes, on the insurance.
Thank you.
I think we're all in agreement?
Everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so page 21, and A, at the top of the page, selection by director. And this was the, the area where we could actually, I'm in agreement with the approval of the city manager in there. This is regarding independent consultants.
So this is a checks and balance issue where the director makes a recommendation, and it's confirmed by city manager for the hiring of a consultant?
And then, of course, keep in mind that the-
It's going to go to city council.
Council also has the ability to approve the contract with the consultant.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Which would be done before any given application is filed.
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay. And in the future, is it done by our mayor, elected by the people, right?
That's mayor.
You know, once we go to this new system with, no?
Mayor doesn't have any different power.
Really? Even with the new?
The council.
Cool. Okay, good clarification there. Next.
Anything else on that page?
So we're accepting it as is?
Yeah, accepting it as is. Good on the rest of it? Right now, we're on 22. See if we had any. Yeah, the bond issue at the bottom. Yeah, I'm in agreement with what's, what's the strikeout.
We're not accepting it as, as written, you're saying, or we're striking as written?
Yeah, as written.
Yeah. We're deleting the ma, this, the-
Yeah.
The declared amount, okay. That makes sense. I think we're in agreement there. Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
23.
We get a little bit of clarification on the bonding, so just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
You're agreeing with the strikeout of the first sentence, the $2,000 sentence?
Right.
And agreeing with the addition of the second sentence that starts as a condition of approval and ends-
That's correct.
As defined.
Yes.
As, as you have written.
23. That looks good. Then the last, let's see, 24. We had talked about that clear and convincing-
This is all about significant gap, and I think you got to have this clear and convincing evidence. I mean, that, we have, they have to be very specific about it.
I'm in agreement to keep it.
This is actually for any exemption to any standard. It's, it's-
Oh, really? It's more than just the significant gap clause?
It's more than just significant gap. If they want a variance from any condition that's required otherwise under this ordinance, they have to come in with the high standard that we've crafted, not the, and we've, we've recommended rejecting Mr. Torres's lower
I'm good.
So I, I just, I had the question comes to my mind, what, what, what is considered clear and convincing evidence when we all agree that it is? I mean, that, that's the ultimate-
Clear and convincing evidence is the highest of the three main standards. You've got preponderance of the evidence at the lowest, which is more likely than not. Next, pardon me, clear and convincing is the middle. Next up is clear and convincing evidence, which is a strong, strong evidence in favor, and then the highest is the, the criminal standard, proof beyond a reasonable doubt.
Oh.
And so clear and convincing evidence slots in between those two, although there's no, it's not a numeric definition.
Bite your tongue. Little, little sidebar in law there. That's great, yeah.
So where are we?
We're done.
We're good with that?
I think that's it. Now, in terms of making the recommendation, we've itemized those as we've gone through, so it should be very clear to staff and legal counsel, our direction in the matter. Are there any further questions from commissioners at this point in time? Would you like to, any closing comments, counsel?
No, we're not at the closing comment time yet.
Okay.
Because the next step is, you have, you have two options here, and we'll have a recommendation. One is you can take a short break, or two is that we can simply read back everything that we've heard, all of your directions, and that that becomes the basis for the motion, and then you all go home a little bit sooner.
Let's do the readback. I, I think we're all on it.
All right, readback it is.
So I'm going through just, now I'm looking at the black line, and I'm going through just the changes that were proposed.
Okay.
And stop me if anything is amiss. The first one is page six. Section B in the middle, bottom of the section. To the present language, add, at the end, the director may waive the required appointment in signed writing, comma, and this is the addition, with notice to the city manager, period.
With notice to the-
To the city manager.
Okay.
And that proposes out of it. The next edit is on page seven. Section 10, 1450, subsection A, conditional use permit application materials, period. Delete the sentence following, the waiver sentence.
All right.
The next edit is page eight, section seven in the middle, alternative sites analysis. Second line from the bottom, add E to rational to be rationale, typo.
Good eyes there.
Um, indeed, thank you. Uh, let's see, next one, page nine. What am I missing? Page eight.
You're striking that.
I heard, oh, I think I had struck that.
You, you did strike it.
Oh, um, the statement of purpose section.
Page eight?
Page, oh, that, page eight, let's see. Keep in mind, the page numbers are different in the two because there's no comments in the black line. So statement of purpose is here. That's in page seven on the black line, at the bo, pardon me, the page eight, goes on to page eight in the black line. That sentence I did strike. I recommended it for striking, and thus it wasn't in the black line. The propagation map sentence is-
This is what you wanted.
Right.
Is not in the black line. And this is the top of page eight on the black line. Yes, so that's said as, as desired. Next, page nine, the hierarchy left as is. Section C, exception, change 300 to 500 and add non-stealth between proposed facilities, so that it's a proposed non-stealth facility within 500 feet. And then staff has directed, the commission, if approved, will direct staff to come back with a definition of stealth to be added to the definition section.
Right, you're going to work that wording here.
There's also this paragraph here that is kind of near that with the opposite.
Oh, yes. Mr. Kramer's correct.
We're going to add an additional portion to C to clarify. We're going to add an additional portion to C on that page to clarify what the exception is, to limit it as you've directed. But that's going to occur between now and the city council.
C1, or exemption?
This is page nine in the black line, which is page 10 in the red line at the bottom. That's C, exception for facilities proposed based on proximity. That's, that's area. So we're all good on that. The next change is page 12 in the black line, which is also page, I don't know, I'm trying to look at here. Oh, here it is, which is also page 13 in the red line. Preferred locations at the top. 500 becomes 200. Next, page 14 in the black line, which is page 15 in the red line. At the top, subsection C, we'll read, design review permit application materials, period. Striking the sentence, the waiver sentence. Next. That's the last of the changes I have for the black line. You'll note that the commission's direction to reject most of Mr. Torres's comments was already built into the black line.
And that would form what has just been read by the interim assistant city attorney should form the basis of any motion that you are going to bring forward to adopt those languages that he has just described, for clarity. I'm tired, too.
So what we're doing is we're making a, we're taking a motion to make a recommendation.
What we're doing is proving a motion to make a recommendation. Pardon?
The number two on that recommendation.
Uh, is it? I don't know.
So, so what you, what you need to do is you need to consider adopting a resolution, making a recommendation to approve the ordinance as amended, and then go on to number three, which is the height, and if you want to add it, noise and light, and light. Yes.
Now, do I have that page?
This was just handed out when we first came in.
Oh, I didn't see it. Okay.
Just a moment, please. Just a moment, Mr. Chair, just a moment, please.
Just to clarify, the recommendation, the resolution that the planning commission would be approving was in the staff report issued on Thursday, attachment B, pages one through three, OI planning commission resolution forwarding a favorable recommendation to the city council on a citywide text amendment, TA 1401, repealing Title Chen, Chapter 10, Article 17, Section 1712, and amending Title 10, Chapter 14 of the OI municipal code, wireless communications facilities. That resolution thus recommends to the council approval of a, a, a ordinance amendment that would be the last one that we just discussed. So it's, just to make sure everything, it's all clear for the record.
So that, that, that's the primary component of, of, of the motion, and then there were, then there's the noise and light issue that-
That's in a victory.
And that can be accomplished with-
So really, we can, it's, so it's going to be number two and number three of the recommendations listed here, with the, with the modification of recognizing the basis for the resolution is based upon what we have-
Just heard.
Just heard. Let's leave it that. Okay, I'm going to make a motion.
You're going to do it? Okay.
Just heard.
Thank you for simplifying my life. Okay. Adopt planning commission resolution recommending that the city council adopt proposed zone text amendment TA 14-01 based on the findings contained therein, repealing section 10-2.1712, and amending Chapter 14 of Title 10 of the OHI municipal code relating to regulations of wireless telecommunications facilities, and forward a recommendation to the city council, make the necessary California environmental quality act findings, and finding that the proposed project is exempt from CEQA based upon our previous discussion with our legal counsel. All notes taken. Number two would be recommend that the city council direct the planning commission to review the height limits in all zones, making recommendations to the city council. And I think we need to add the, the light and noise portion to that as well.
Do we think the lighting was, because we have the new ordinance, it's okay?
So, okay, exempt, okay, disregard, delete lighting, just, I agree. So we're deleting lighting from that verbiage and leaving it at noise. A second?
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Yes.
Jagiella?
Yes.
Isabella?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes.
Chair Foster?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Wojewski?
Aye.
Good job, counsel. Appreciate the hard work. We also want to make, I'd like to make a note that we appreciate the comment from our public, who was very involved in this process and went to great extent to, to allow their, their opinions to be made, and we appreciate that very much. It's a group effort, and we're here to, to propagate a good ordinance, so thank you for that. This meeting's adjourned.